Okay, good morning. I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors back to order. Continuation of our January 11th meeting. Item 59, Rescue and Recovery Operations at Lock and Cheetah landslide site. And we will hear first from our CEO, Mr. Johnston.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, events as usual in an emergency or overtaking us, and there is a continuing change in circumstance, some for the better. And we have our Public Safety Officers, the Sheriff Brooks, Director of Disaster Preparedness, who has a report for you, and the Fire Chief. We do not have the geologists here, as was requested yesterday. They are in the field, along with the State Geologist, who is down, and Ron Coons from Public Works is here to answer any questions. But according to County Council, there is a very narrow, or a prescribed amount of what we can discuss today at this meeting because of the agenda item. So we have to be a little cautious that we not let the conversation start to drift into sort of long-term issues, since we are talking about rescue and recovery. Sheriff Brooks?
Morning, Sheriff Brooks.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Thanks for an opportunity to both give you an update and ask you to ratify a plan that has changed. As the CEO mentioned, things have changed fairly dramatically in the last day. The Fire Chief and I had worked on a timetable that was subject to all kinds of variations. But basically, we were looking But yesterday was a very different day of the people that we had listed as potentially missing. Throughout the day, into the early morning hours, we were able to eliminate all 10 of those remaining names. That meant that we were no longer in a rescue mode, there was no one to rescue, and in fact, there was no one to recover. So we went quickly through both phases in a day. And then the other surprise that happened when we were getting ready for our press conference to announce that, the end of those two phases, then we were informed by the Highway Patrol that they had moved their timetable up from Saturday to today to reopen Highway 101. The reason for that schedule change on their part is I-5 now is undermined southbound, and so they're either going to close it or compress all the traffic into the northbound lanes. Same thing may happen further north of Lock and Cheetah on Highway 101. They may be restricted to one-lane traffic in one direction. But they had to open this artery in order to keep the state economy going and to provide for emergency service transportation. So, given that, and given the reality that if the highway's open, residents are going to try to come back, whether we facilitate it or not, and if we don't facilitate it, we have no control over making it an orderly transition and giving them proper advisements and information, we moved our complete time schedule up. And we'll be asking you to ratify a specific plan this morning. Yesterday, we were also demobilizing all of the emergency vehicles, moving staff off the site. There was a memorial held at the site in respect for the people that died in that event, and for their family members, and so that our rescue staff, who worked heroically on that debris field, both public safety employees and volunteers could have some closure. And we're working with them in terms of post-incident debriefing. And our chaplains, our volunteer chaplains, were very, very effective and helpful on the site. We really appreciated all of their efforts. Give you a little bit of an update on the current situation beyond the casualties and human cost of this terrible event. Our roll-up cost right now for Fire and Sheriff is our $3.5 million. We're still going through debris removal and other costs that will continue probably for the next couple of weeks. Damages to roads and bridges, $4.8 million. Water control levees and channels, $33.8 million. Private residences, $7.3 million. Crops, $38 million, for a total of over $93 million, and counting. The area of Lock and Cheetah is and will remain a geologic hazard on into the future. We were faced with the issue of determining level of risk for the people that live there. It was risky 10 years ago. It's been risky every day from '95 to today. It's more risky into the future. But is there an identified imminent threat that there's going to be an additional major landslide? We don't have information to validate that kind of a decision. So there are all kinds of things we have to look at in terms of reintroduction. Some rain is still expected next week. We don't know the magnitude of that. There is a depression in the slide area, above the foot of the slide, that actually creates a crater that contains water. Water after a rain or through seepage will sit there, will move down into the slide area. That's another potential thing to look at and monitor into the future. But we have officially ceased our rescue and recovery efforts and moved almost all of our personnel off the site, except for those involved in cleanup and security. Utilities have been approved by the county to be reintroduced into that community. It will take a matter of days to weeks, depending on the utility and the problem they run into, to bring potable water and power and gas back into the Lock and Cheetah area. People have been living there the entire time that chose not to evacuate without those. They're getting along fine. They're basically camping in their homes at this point. The foot of the slide is still moving, water still draining through it. That was another event that changed yesterday, even for recovery efforts. The slide became too unstable to work on. With that additional movement, immediately, rescue personnel had to be moved off the site. Many of the residents who have voluntarily left still wish to return. Many of them are in Red Cross housing. Some are staying with relatives and friends. Some will not return, but some are very adamant that they want to as soon as they possibly can. We will be meeting with them at 10 o'clock this morning in a community meeting to present a plan to them for reentry into the community. We're still waiting for a federal emergency declaration that will release additional resources from FEMA, both for the residents and for our jurisdictions. An assessment team from FEMA may be here as soon as today to take a look at the site. So they're moving very quickly in response to the Board's request in that regard. We expect something probably in two or three days on that level. We have consulted with County Council and determined, just as in a mandatory evacuation, we don't have the right to physically remove people that aren't interfering with our operations when the emergency is no longer present and they're not interfering with us, and their homes are safe to reenter in terms of the physical structure of the home. We do not, as government, have the right to keep them out of their homes. With the Highway 101 opening at 1:00, we're looking at the community meetings, spending time briefing them, getting information so we can present them resident cards, give them the proper advisements about the safety risks of going back into the community. Our goal is to keep non-residents out of the community, basically for their safety, and because they have no right to be there at this stage, for at least a period of time to get by this current issue with the movement of the slide area. The plan, and the change of it, and the change of it happened basically through the evening hours. Our staff had to work all night to make a plan that worked by today instead of working by Saturday or by Sunday. It compressed everything. Tremendous pressure on fire in terms of debris removal and Public Works, and all the affected agencies have had to pick up the pace to make this work. But the plan was made in concurrence with the CEO's office and advice from County Council and all the affected departments, most of which that are represented here. They've worked very closely together to offer their advice, to take a look at the legal issues and the human health and welfare issues, in terms of trying to facilitate this and make it as painless as possible for everyone involved. We are going to make it very clear at that meeting that we do not recommend that people either remain in Lock and Cheetah, or that they return to Lock and Cheetah if they've left. But it's a personal decision government can't make for them. The risk level is fairly high, but it's not imminent at this point, as far as we can tell. There will be a statement of risk, and I think you probably have a copy of it, but it's basically a modification of the sign that was posted in front of Lock and Cheetah in 1995. We've added some things to it. We've made it a little more specific to this incident. This advisement will be handed out to all the residents at the meeting, and as they check in to go into the community itself, it will be mailed to all the owners of record, and will be posted on all of the households within that community so that everyone will know. No parking signs will be posted all along that stretch of the highway to keep the curiosity seekers away. There won't be anywhere for them to park. They can't enter the community to park, and they can't park along the roadways. The last thing we want is additional people coming into the area, both for the sake of the residents and for the sake of the safety of those curiosity seekers. The red-tag areas will be fenced off. It'll have a gate so that fire and rescue workers can help people get their personal property out of those red-tagged homes. But we tend to seal that area off and protect it as best we can. There's a package of safety information that we'll be presenting, that includes the advisement and the specifics of a plan to go back in, and how as homeowners, they can deal with the issue of utilities not being on, the reinstallation of utilities safely, and those kinds of things that they'll be needing to work with until things are normalized in that area. Water will be available there for fire suppression and potable water. The Fire Department's going to bring in one of their buffaloes. The water company will fill it up periodically. So people will have sanitation and drinking water in the community. The issue is going to be ongoing in terms of monitoring. All the affected agencies are going to be looking at the community in terms of a change in the status of an imminent threat. That could be brought around by percolation of water. That could be brought about by additional rain. Could just be geological factors within the hillside. We'll be watching that carefully, looking for the expertise of Public Works in building and safety and fire to advise us of any changes that they're aware of. If there's a change that increases the hazard level, we'll go back into an evacuation mode. With that, I'll present the Fire Chief, Bob Roper, and after that, we'll be able to answer any questions.
Excuse me, I do have a question. I heard this morning on the radio, the coordination with the Highway Patrol and the opening, that it may not in fact be a total opening of the 101. It may be a one lane, and the issue with trucks still coming out and with materials.
There are a lot of those issues. Most of the trucks, we had a couple hundreds, emergency vehicles out there, including heavy equipment. Most of those have already been moved off the site. Their deadline, including the deadline for all the media traffic, was to be vacated from the freeway side at 6:00 this morning. There's still some debris clearance going on, so there's still some remaining equipment. The Highway Patrol is going to stage that as they see fit. I think the one lane probably will come about because they're going to leave one lane vacant for residents to check in, so they don't have to buck the speed of traffic. It'll be residents only, leaving one remaining lane. But as soon as they can, they want to open up two lanes in either direction.
Okay. Just wanted to have that said publicly.
And the other thing I'd like to mention, the media has been carrying the information yesterday that we had a plan to move people in at 1:00. We never released that. We're bringing it to your Board. So they were putting two and two together in terms of the timing of the highway opening and the knowledge we were going to reopen the community, and they just put that together in a story. But we have made no official pronouncement about that.
Chief Roper.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. The Sheriff covered most of the information that I can give to you. Yesterday morning, the key item that caused the decision was the movement of the land. At about 8:00 a.m. yesterday morning, we set up grading stakes early on into the system where there was measurements taken. And about 8:00 a.m. yesterday morning, crews, the safety people who watched out for the crews, noticed that there was a difference in the elevation of the grading stakes, where one area of the land raised, others shifted, and there was water flowing into the area. With that, just confirmed what the geologist said all along, that that area is highly unstable for rescue workers and for residents, and it's unknown when movement will happen. With that, the decision was made with Sheriff's Department that we pull all rescuers off, and that's when we, because of the work by the Sheriff's Department on the accounting of the confirmed people missing, we made the decision to abandon the rescue efforts. At that point, there was no point, and there was no recovery efforts because everybody was accounted for. So now we're at the point of deciding what to do about the reentry into the community, is where we are today. What the Fire District is busy doing overnight and today is removing the segregated debris piles, one being construction materials from the homes, and the others being dirt that was removed. That's being removed for health reasons, and also, we have very limited areas in there on-site, that if the land was to move again, for the public to evacuate to and for rescue workers to come into. So we got to get those debris piles out to give us some additional real estate to work on in that area. So that's working today, and is probably work for the next couple of days, getting the rest of the lumber and debris out. I need to point out, and just be on public, that as people reenter into the area, they are going into an area that they fully well know that is highly unstable. There is a house up on Vista del Rincon that was damaged and destroyed in 1995. It was never removed because of private property rights, and it's there kind of as a monument that everybody knew that the area was unstable. Every year, mud flows would come down their streets, and they would get their own skiploaders and stuff to clear their streets. The area is highly unstable. It's even more unstable now, because now we have the big toe of the slide that took out the homes, that has no wall around it, nor would any wall hold it, and when it rains, that's got to go downhill. As it goes downhill, it'll hit the gas station area, it'll hit the main access going into the entire community. The area's going to be cut off. There is no secondary access into Lock and Cheetah. There's only one way in, one way out. I want to be on record that if that area is impacted, emergency personnel will not be able to access people who may need immediate assistance. And so the area is highly unstable, and I recommend strongly that people do not reenter.
Chief, question on the gas station. Is that in the red-tag zone area? Will it be?
Well, what we've done is, and when we had the mandatory evacuation, just for clarification, we put all of Lock and Cheetah in the red-tag zone. Okay? What we've done now, based on the geologist's opinion and working with County Billings and Safety, they went up yesterday, and we are erecting a fence along the existing red-tag, the official red-tag areas where the damaged homes are, and around the mud flow. So the gas station right now is outside of the official red-tag area for the threat that's there today, if that makes sense. The whole area is, I'd say, as under caution, but it's now outside of that. But I just wanted to also say that the geologists, when they talked about the rest of the hill coming, that area that geologist was concerned about included the gas station.
Thank you.
Just one other comment that I didn't mention. The issue of the foot and the toe of the mudslide that's currently in the community that destroyed the homes, that is not being moved, according to the geologist. It cannot be moved now without starting, triggering another landslide, and it may never be moved. And the law gives the Director of Emergency Services the ability to make a decision on issues like evacuation or cessation of rescue and recovery until the next regularly scheduled Board meeting. Right now, both my decision and recommendation and your ability to ratify it coincide because we haven't announced anything up to this point, and so I'm asking your approval of this plan.
I'd like to move as a recommended action.
Second. Go ahead.
Motion, second on the floor, or the table, as it were.
I have a couple of other just technical questions, but we probably should deal with the motion.
Any objections to the motion?
Can I get more clarity what the motion is?
Sure. Item 59 is rescue and recovery operations, and our Public Safety leadership is asking that we ratify the closure of the rescue and recovery operations.
And the end of the mandatory evacuation.
Yes, and the end of the mandatory evacuation.
End of the mandatory evacuation and the...
Any objection to the motion? Seeing none so ordered. Thank you, Supervisor Michael.
A quick question for probably, I don't know, somebody answer this. How are we handling, I mean, I understand you can bring in potable water. I know there's such a thing as gas generators that can produce some lighting. You mentioned sanitation. Are there going to be porta-potties out there? Is, you know, is there a sewage disposal system that is functioning? Are all of the homes on septic so that they don't have a problem? I just, you know, I need to ask that question. When we're asking people, or letting people go back in, they can live without water, but we have a public health hazard if they don't have some sort of sanitation facility.
I'll answer that from the perspective that we know what the current residents that stayed on-site are doing. All the homes there are on septic, and they're basically just using buckets of water to activate their sewage disposal.
Right. Okay.
Just ask that.
Supervisor, please.
It's kind of interesting to know when the line may be crossed and the county takes some responsibility. But allowing, say, a water system to be reestablished, which is a public responsibility, are we in any way taking some responsibility for people moving back?
If I could refer that to the County Council, because we've had those discussions about legal responsibilities, and he's more eloquent than I am in addressing them.
County Council.
Well, there are a number of questions that have arisen over the past several days, and what I'd like to do with the Board's permission is try to give an overview of the setting and what aspects of the law may bear on the subject. And what I'm about to say addresses the legal status of the county's role regarding the Lock and Cheetah community. The human suffering and loss have been tragic, and a discussion of the law may seem harsh or callous in that light. But I ask everyone to please understand that what I'm providing is a legal opinion only, not an expression of my feelings or the feelings of the county family. We all feel great sympathy for those who have lost their loved ones and their homes. That being said, we find the following legal setting. The county does not have any ownership interest in the properties involved in this disaster, except for the county roads that were damaged in the landslide. In this catastrophe, one private land... In this catastrophe, one private landowner's hillside slid onto the property of other private landowners. The county does not have a legal obligation to protect landowners and residents from disasters like this, nor does it have a legal obligation to warn people of such events. What is the legal basis on which the county might restrain residents from using their properties? It is the government's police power which is contained in the Constitution. The county's emergency police powers have been utilized to evacuate residents, to undertake and complete the rescue operation, and to identify and designate, to the extent possible, those structures that are public nuisances and therefore not habitable. Chapter 3 of the County Ordinance Code contains the county's ordinance on the subject of emergency preparation and response. In part, it defines emergency to mean, quote, "the actual or threatened existence of conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property within this county caused by such conditions as air pollution, fire, flood, storm, epidemic, riot, or earthquake," which conditions are or are likely to be beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of this county, requiring the combined forces of other political subdivisions to combat. The Sheriff, as the Director of Emergency Services and then your Board, has the power to act to protect persons and property from emergency conditions. When the extreme peril has ended, other county departments assume roles according to their assigned responsibilities. The building official has, under the Building Code, the authority to determine whether a structure is a hazard to life safety and therefore a public nuisance. He can red-tag structures he determines to be public nuisances. The building official has a very difficult task in determining whether structures in the La Conchita community are a hazard. He relies in part on the advice of experts, in this instance, a geologist. As you have heard, the building official has red-tagged a number of structures, designating them as unsafe for habitation. The building official has to go through a lot-by-lot evaluation of the conditions and determine whether the conditions of each structure he examines are such that it cannot be inhabited, and if he makes that determination, then to declare it a public nuisance. But if he determines that it can be inhabited, then we are not in a position to prevent people from returning to those structures. I hope that responds satisfactorily to the supervisor's question. With respect to water, I think, was the specific issue, and sanitation, as the supervisor asked also. The building official would have to determine in each instance whether current conditions limit the habitability of that structure, but it's a fact-based inquiry. And we all know, and probably have ourselves experienced, conditions where we in our homes have been without water for a time, or have been without power for a time, or without gas. And obviously, we continue to live in our homes and wait until the utilities are restored. And it is these factors that the building official has to consider.
Okay. Thank you. What next? I think we're done with this item as much as we can today. We've taken the action that was requested of us. We know there is much more in front of us over the next months, probably. I only ask the leadership that certainly if you have a need that you need additional personnel, you certainly work with our CEO to make sure you receive what you need, to make sure the job in front of us is done as quickly as possible so the residents can have, know that they have the support they need. And obviously...
Kathy.
Okay. We have a public card here.
But before we do that, may I ask the County Council, will you restate the motion that was made and seconded?
The motion that was made and seconded was to ratify the Director of Emergency Services' determination that the rescue and recovery had been completed, and beyond that, I'm sure there were other things incorporated that our clerk would probably be better prepared to state than I am.
I think it also included that the mandatory evacuation has been lifted.
I have a question, too. Besides posting these signs on people's houses, can we get some big signs on the roadway? Because you're going to have people coming into the area, and they need to know, because not only are people living there, but anyone who goes there is in potential danger.
There is going to be a large sign posted at the entrance to La Conchita from the Highway 101, so that everyone entering in will see it. There was one in 95, they tore it down. We're going to put a new one up with a new warning.
And just all people who are residents or owners there will receive this warning?
Yes, yes. And then there'll be that public posting, so anyone entering for any other reason will also see it.
What about crews that are going to go in to help put in electricity? I mean, it seems to me anyone that goes there is at risk, and I'm just wondering about those issues. I guess it's up to the different companies that install the utilities, whether they want to risk it, but we can't keep them out.
That is correct. Obviously, we, there is a continuum of risk that we all face in our homes, in our communities, throughout the world, and each responsible party has to assess, and that includes the homeowners, has to assess the degree of risk and determine whether it is acceptable or not. And that is true of the utility companies. They have to determine whether there is acceptable risk for their employees, and for that matter, whether the risk of continuing to supply utilities to the area in the manner they're currently provided is acceptable.
And the county, you know, I agree that, you know, we are advising people against entry into the hazard area. And is it possible to have this be a part of the motion or make this a separate motion that, you know, while we have removed the mandatory evacuation, the county advises that no one enter the area, that it's a hazard area?
Well, I believe Sheriff Brooks had that in his comments that said that.
Well, I just wonder, as part of the motion, just in the fact that, you know, yes, we're removing the mandatory evacuation, but it comes with the knowledge that the county advises that no one enter the area because we believe it's a hazard.
I'll add that to the motion, so that we can officially, the Board's...
Yeah, yeah, true. We've already...
Or we can make it a separate motion, I would think.
Well, that may be another way to do it. I mean, just, you know, officially, the position of the Board of Supervisors is that we do not advise that people occupy these residents here, and that we direct our staff to take appropriate measures to put those warnings out rather than identifying the specific measures. So let's make that the motion.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bennett, I would observe that the Sheriff's presentation on his rescue and recovery included his plan for reentry to the community by the landowners and residents, and included in that was his description of the warning that he intended to give. So I don't think an additional motion is necessary.
In fact, the packet Sheriff includes this, correct? That goes to every resident moving back in the community?
I believe your Board ratified that...
That action.
As part of the Sheriff's rescue and recovery plan.
So do you advise us not to do this second motion?
I don't think you need to. I think you've already done it.
May I ask a question? We understand that among ourselves here, but will the public understand that? It's a public comment.
Well, perhaps what you could do, I don't think reconsideration is necessary. Perhaps you could simply restate the motion to make that entirely clear and make certain that there are no objections to the restatement of the motion.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So the motion is to accept staff's recommendation to end the rescue operation, to end the mandatory evacuation order of the Sheriff, and also to accept all of the procedural steps that the Sheriff has identified in terms of residents' reentry into those places. That would include the county's position that it is not safe for people to reenter, and that staff is going to engage in notification procedures that they think are appropriate to notify people of that. Any problems? Works?
That's quite...
Was that restates it?
That was the motion.
And the second. Is that good? Okay.
No objection.
No objection to it, then that is, again, restatement of the complete motion.
Maybe some people ought to go reread The Death of Common Sense.
My comment about certainly the work that building and safety teams will be undertaking is that certainly working with the CEO as staff may be needed to move as expeditiously as possible through the tough job in front of you with the community.
We have a public comment card.
Yes, we have a public comment card. Scott Tignak. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on a moment, please. Yes.
Pardon me. I'd like just to underline something that's been underlined again and again in the course of this emergency. One of the struggles we've had is to come up with language or terminology that is clear and not, a lot of what we talk about are kind of words of art. I mean, they have definitions, and they mean certain things in certain circumstances, but not necessarily the general community. But I want to just remind us all, or the community, that, you know, this is, the dilemma that we're faced with is risk and responsibility. And in this situation, the County Council has explained what the law provides for, and certain risk is being assumed and the responsibility taken by individual homeowners, and of course, the government has to take their part. But the thing I really want to point out is, is that as much as we watch this and have watched this over the years and have met with members of the community, not only in La Conchita but other places, in this particular instance, there is no real warning system. People like to think that there is a way to be warned. Well, we have been warned. Mother Nature has warned us, and has warned us more than one time, but there isn't going to be something that says, "You now have three hours in which to gather your belongings and, you know, exit the building." When that warning comes, it will coincide in all probability with the actual event and disaster. And I know it's a hard concept for people to get, but there is no warning system. And so we know it's raining, that should be a cautionary note, and we know we've just had an incident, and we have something that's moving up there. It doesn't necessarily mean that it will end in any more, you know, serious harm, maybe some property damage. We went nine years without, but that does not mean it cannot happen again. But I say this because the thing the Public Works Department and I struggle with is, people call us and say, "Well, can't we have," you know, if you've got a monitoring station, they think of that in terms of, "Well, you're monitoring it, so, you know, give us a heads up when you get the message." Monitoring is really a gathering of data and looking at things, and in some cases, like watching paint dry, you know, you aren't seeing much change. At least in that case, you can maybe periodically test it. We are testing it right now with the water and the rest of it. The last time this occurred back in 95, according to Marty Robinson in our office, who was involved, there were large cracks in the upper area, and that, and there were meetings months ahead of time, but it was not imminent. And the thought was, well, maybe it'll happen gradually. In some cases, it's gradual; in some cases, it's in, you know, in modern terms, in a nanosecond. So I just, I'm saying that for the record. I know all our hearts are heavy, both with grief and our concern for people and wanting to do the right thing, and within the law and within a free society, we're trying to do that, but it's not a pleasant thing that we're faced with, and we regret that.
I just have one more question. Did Fire Chief use the expression for the words "highly unstable"? Am I correct in describing the slide area, highly unstable?
I believe, I use it more for the mud flow that's going to come down.
Okay.
And the crater condition behind the street.
So what we're really saying is that the slide did not stabilize the mountain.
Oh, absolutely.
Not at all. We have a public speaking card, Scott Tignak. Like to speak.
We simply wanted to let your Board know that Waste Management has made a very generous offer to the county in terms of disposal of some of the concrete material, and I'll let Mr. Tignak kind of explain that, and we would be back to your Board for a very specific recommendation on it, but I thought it was a good time for him to at least share what Waste Management is willing to do.
Okay. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. My name is Scott Tignak with Waste Management. The county has asked us if we can do anything to participate in the cleanup, disposal of cycling of materials from the La Conchita area, as well as other disaster areas in the county. We'll waive all fees on our concrete and perhaps our soil to allow that material to move freely into our landfill. We'll be asking in exchange that fees that we collect on behalf of the county be waived in the future on this type of material so that we're not bearing the burden of paying for material that we're not being compensated for. We also would like to be looking at all the disposal debris, see what we can do to bring that in, perhaps at a reduced rate. We've got our engineer with us today. We're planning to go to the site to assess the different piles and look at the best way of getting rid of the material quickly. So we're here to help.
Very good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Bennett.
Appreciate that offer, and thank you. But I think it's, as we're coming to the close of this meeting, it's probably appropriate, and this reminds me to point out the number of businesses and citizens that have offered to volunteer their services. We have funeral homes that have offered to volunteer free burials for victims. We have E.J. Harrison stepped forward and provided dumpsters for free out there, and I could go on and on with wrecking services have offered to do that. So it's just another example, and we really appreciate that offer, and I'm sure you'll have to work the details out with our staff. But I think this is just another classic example of the strong community spirit that we have here in Ventura County as people step forward to help, and certainly the Board of Supervisors is officially very grateful of all of those efforts. Thank you.
There is. Yes.
I would just also like to state that while we are lifting the requirement to evacuate, it is, and we obviously acknowledge that people should not enter the area, I would anticipate that if we have rains, particularly you're going to end up with mud flows, there is no other access, and they may very well be evacuated again, and it may be soon.
I would certainly like to thank all of you here today. I know you've all had a part in this, and your work has been just phenomenal. Public safety folks, the men and women from all over Southern California have responded to this. Our words of appreciation aren't near strong enough or full enough, and we thank you. And at this point, the Boards, oh, wait a minute, Sheriff Brooks.
In regards to that, I just wanted to make one other comment, because as the effort went from rescue and recovery to a broader scope, the family of county agencies became much more involved. We had, you know, daily meetings with CEO and with extended groups as time went on. The level of cooperation was very, very helpful to us, where they provided assistance and a different perspective. There was, you know, nothing that presented an obstacle to keep us from doing our job, and I want to thank your Board for your tremendous support during this as well.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor...
Just quickly, and I know that we have to move so that people can get in place for the public meeting with the residents, but while we focus on La Conchita because it is the most catastrophic of the events that happened in this county, I would like everybody to realize how hard all of the county workers and city workers have been working through this storm event. You know, every, we focus on La Conchita, and no one is taking away from the incredible effort put into that. But on a day-to-day basis, since the rains started, the, all of the public works and other people that are involved in protecting the public and the public facilities and private facilities have been spread extremely thin, and they have worked without rest, they have worked without backup, and I think it's important to, while we focus on... And I think it's important to, while we focus on Lock and Cheeta, to realize that there has been damage all over this county, and there have been agencies and employees everywhere just working their hearts out. And so I think although they weren't involved in the Lock and Cheeta effort directly, they need to be praised and recognized as well. And I hope that as, in the next few days, things settle down, that everybody can start getting some rest and that they know that they're appreciated for the efforts, the yeoman's efforts that have gone on in the last week, week and a half.
Certainly agree with that, and I would ask for the residents' patience in addressing some of their needs out there, as our teams have been spread thin. And with that, we can now adjourn this meeting of January 11th, and we will be back here at least on the 25th of January, or as needed. Thank you all for the excellent work. Stand adjourned.